Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Hauser? Kent?
Here.
Me?
Here.
Manki?
Here.
And Rice Wyke?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Young?
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you.
I would submit a motion to approve the agenda for the tax notice for the public hearing.
Young, one second. Go to Young. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so this is our... Any public comment for our hearing? Okay, so hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
We move to adjourn the tax notice hearing.
Me, one second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And now we will begin the meeting, or another public hearing for the middle school band practice room renovations. And call to order. No, no call to order. Does anybody have any comment on this?
I support it.
Okay, hearing none, we will call our meeting to order with no call. Hauser? Kent?
Here.
Me?
Here.
Manki?
Here.
And Rice Wyke?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Young?
Here.
Do you have a quorum? Jason, you're on.
I would entertain, I would enter a motion to approve the agenda for the meeting.
How about that?
How about we approve the, I'm looking at the agenda and it says approve the agenda.
So Manki gets that motion.
Okay, I will take that motion.
Williams, one second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now I'll ask for the score.
Thank you. Our district mission is to teach all and reach all. Our district vision, Urbandale will be a school district that brings learning to life for everyone. And the UCSD School Board mission, we partner with stakeholders to teach all and reach all through governance of board policy and operating protocol.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, and tonight we have Jill Altreger, Polk County Supervisor, and Brian Fast from Prairie Meadows. David Fast.
David Fast.
Oh, did I say, did I write?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay.
I just mixed the two names. They are here to present.
Where would you like us?
Right here.
Right here.
Right here.
Well, I understand.
Up to you, Adam, okay.
Well, thank you for having us here today. This is my second check presentation, and you almost ended up with an IOU because my assistant was gone today, and I thought that'd be much less exciting than the big chat. So I appreciate you having us here. Prairie Meadows and the County Board of Supervisors have established quite a nice partnership over the last quite a few years, actually, let me think. They've tried to put me on strips, so I know this, right? Since 2007, Polk County and Prairie Meadows have given over $20 million back to the students in the district. And what we do here is that we bring a check that is a percentage of the money that is taken in, the gross that's taken in over the year. And so we are, this year, providing $1.3 million to Polk County students. You guys, you guys have already gotten your check and you know what the amount is.
Yep.
Well, I tell you what, the first one I did, they didn't know. Kind of like, I'm sure you're right. But I wanted David to have an opportunity to say a couple of words.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you. I was able to come and do this last year. My child, my seven-year-old, is a second grader at Karen Acres. So it's, we live in Beavardale, but we chose Urbandale School Districts because we just love Urbandale School Districts. So happy to help with this and be a part of this, and just thank you for all you do. Appreciate it.
It's just, so people know what we do with this is that we put it back in the pot for salaries so that it can go to helping us give our teachers increases where we're able.
Excellent.
That's great, because it is, it's non-directed funds you guys get to spend, and I do appreciate that. That kind of makes it, so it's unique to each individual group. And by the way, I should have started with this, thank you all for serving. Local government is very close to my heart. I started at City Council. I truly appreciate all you guys donating your time and sticking for today. And with that, we have a check.
And I know.
$59,642, and my favorite part, 10 cents. Please use that last 10 cents very wisely as well. And can I ask for a picture?
Yes.
My media team would be upset if I forgot that.
Do we want to move back here?
Do you need help moving this?
Thank you, guys.
Do we have everyone?
We'll take the 10 cents.
I don't think all the school board members are here, are they?
You are, Catherine's missing.
Catherine's missing.
Do you want everybody else to come up too?
Oh, no, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought you were, I thought, I heard a roll call from me, so I thought you... Okay, yeah, anyone that wants to.
You guys want to come up in the picture too?
Like my picture?
And the kids? Your board members too?
Students.
Yeah, I thought you guys were all board members.
Students.
We are.
Student board members.
They're about to.
Students, come on.
Get these things out of my face.
You need help, do you know?
We're good. You might get a chair, it's just in there.
What are we going to do?
Now you're all joining us, I appreciate it.
There we go.
All right. We were so close.
No, you're good, you're good.
All right, here we go, one, two, three. Great.
Awesome.
Thank you very much, this is yours.
I thank you.
You did another one for your office, I know you're gonna start plastering them up.
You can put that, me, me, better.
Very cool.
You know what, I didn't have anyone take a picture with my office, so would you be willing to send that?
Yes, Jonathan reached out to K-Hop and assisted her photo, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to board recognition. Okay. You guys are... Tell me your names.
Dana Kane.
Dana Kane. Good, you're the first two. Okay. So, tonight, we want to recognize, these are from our boys wrestling team, so tell me if I say any of this incorrectly. Kane, how do you say your last name?
Tigas.
Tigas. And Kane is academic all-state, and he's a state runner-up at 190 pounds at the Iowa High School State Wrestling Tournament. So we're going to recognize you first, and we're gonna have you sign a...
Yep.
How you say it? And Dane Rue is an honorable mention academic all-state in boys wrestling and a state qualifier at the Iowa High School State Wrestling Tournament. And not here tonight, we also want to recognize Damian Tim for our boys bowling. He was a Class 2A First Team All-State, a Class 2A All-District First Team in the West District, and an eighth place at the Class 2A Iowa High School State Bowling Championship. So we wanted to also recognize him. And I do have to apologize, there's a clerical error on your certificates, but I'm gonna let you take them home. We're gonna reprint them for you so that there's no errors on them.
I couldn't even see it.
If you look far, you might see it.
Okay, one, two, three, here we go. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. Congrats. Thank you, Shana.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Cheryl, and I'm the principal of the middle school, and it's good to see everybody. I could spend more than 10 minutes bragging about what's going on at the middle school, but I understand I'm at a time limit, so I don't have a big check, but I've got more fun than that.
We take small checks.
I'm gonna walk away with that, I'm gonna put it toward those parents. So I'm gonna do a little bragging, and I decided that we would title the "Celebrating Learning and Community at UMS", because what you're gonna see are some student activities and some things we've been doing to enhance the feeling of community at the middle school. And we've come an awfully long way in four years, and I'm very proud of the work that we've done. First thing I want you to know, and some of you have been part of these, and some of you have attended these, and maybe some of you are unaware, we have an assembly per quarter. And the first quarter is usually safety, and then second quarter is empathy. Then we have accountability, and then we have responsibility at the end of the year. And so every quarter, we get together and we have an assembly. And in that assembly is, we do it by grade level, so there's a sixth-grade one, a seventh-grade one, and an eighth-grade one, and that has a lot to do with how many kids we can put in one environment. And we recognize students who have been nominated by their teachers. We also do highlight of which students are in different activities and clubs. We highlight staff for certain different accolades that students have nominated them for as well. And then we have kind of an activity, and this was sort of a bag toss, and they did a team. And if you can tell, there's a teacher team, I think if you can look in the back, you see Mr. Babcock, and then this is the eighth-grade assembly, so we've got some eighth graders. And the whole, the whole group participates, and it's pretty exciting. We started that about two years ago, knowing that we were getting our PBS up and going, and that we wanted to demonstrate a way, school-wide. And after COVID, it was difficult to get everybody in the same environment, and we had to kind of pause on that for a while. So October 24th, the end of the assembly ended with this. We also spent time on the 24th acknowledging one of our teachers, Mr. Stephen Baldis. And he spent time in the military, and there is something called a quilt of valor. And I wasn't familiar, I'm a military kid myself, but I was not familiar with the quilt of valor. And that is an honor that is bestowed upon a human who has spent time in combat. And so Stephen spent time in the military and then is now teaching in our building. His associate, Leslie Barrigan, who some of you might know, Leslie was featured in the Urbandale Living Magazine this year. She's a lovely woman, and she and her sister dug through what it takes to become someone that's a quilt of valor recipient. Not only did they make the quilt, but they figured out that he could be somebody that could be recognized. And so we took the time, kind of right before Veterans Day, and brought Stephen out in front of the kids. And he's a special education teacher, but also a fan favorite, everybody loves Steve. So he came out and it was a big deal, he had no idea what was gonna happen. His family and friends came from outside, and that was very exciting. I believe you were there to be part of that day, so that was pretty exciting for us. Another thing that we were able to do is partner with the high school. And we had some German exchange students and some Japanese exchange students that came over to the high school, and they were there visiting for a number of days. I think, wanna say the German students were maybe there a little bit longer than the Japanese, I might have that backwards. And they, Bachman Sensei reached out, and so did Dr. Steeter? Did I have that right?
Seeger?
Seeger, yes, maybe that's it. Anyway, the nice gentleman in the picture with me in the middle. Anyway, they came over and we took the Japanese and German students and placed them, small groups of them in different classes. And they were able to, they had little presentations prepared, and they tried to do their very best in the very best English that they could to communicate with our kids. And then our kids had just tons of questions, like, you know, how much does it cost to this? When do you get a driver's license? And do you date? And all the important things. And so the kids had a great time, our kids had a great time, their kids had a great time. And in these pictures, you can see where the students had these, they were kind of like, they were toys, but they were kind of in a small group, and so they taught the kids how to use the toys from their culture and their country. And so it was interesting to watch, the sixth graders were much more involved in like the toy stuff, and the eighth graders just wanted to ask just pelt questions at them. And most of the German and Japanese students were older, like 16, 17-ish, and so they were able to have a little bit from our understanding of the language, and were able to enjoy the questions that our kids were asking them. You might be familiar with something called BizTown, and that's Junior Achievement, puts on a thing for fifth graders, and it's business in nature. We experienced something this year for the first time called Finance Park, and it's through our partnership with JA. And it's basically a way to get kids to begin to think about personal finance. And so I have a quick little video that I'm gonna show you that kind of explains what Finance Park is about. That's for sure not it. Can you hear that?
JA Finance Park is a financial literacy course for grades seven through 12, and it's all about personal finance. Students get to practice creating a personal budget, concepts like debit and credit, really in a low-risk environment. They get an avatar and a fake life scenario. They get to work through what it's like to be an adult and kind of work through all those decisions that adults make on a day-to-day basis.
It will teach kids how to manage their own money, something that they don't get a very big opportunity to do right now.
They'll be in a small group with their peers and work with an adult volunteer who can kind of be their mentor for the day and guide them through some decisions around creating and following a budget, pay for childcare or utilities.
Volunteering's a lot of fun, you really help kids learn something that they need to know.
It gives an opportunity for our students to realize what they need to do today to accomplish what they want to do in the future.
So that kind of gives you a little bit of a, an overview of what Finance Park is about. So we were able to take the curriculum offerings that are in our FCS, our Family Consumer Science class, and there's a financial component to that. And so Ms. Baumann, our FCS teacher, took seventh graders who were on her roster first semester over to Finance Park in December. And she'll do the same thing again with students that she has second semester mid-May. And so the kids were able to get in the small groups, and Julie, help me. Oh, there we go. They were able to get in small groups, and each one of the group leaders is a community person from a business. And so you saw the superintendent of West Des Moines, and there's different people who have different business partnerships around the metro area who volunteer their time. So there were tech people, there was industry people, there were realtors, there were all kinds of folks. And they kind of capped in a little small group, and they talk through the life scenario that they give a kid. So the child might be, you know, married, two kids, your income is this, your debt is this, you have to figure out these things go. And so it's kind of math-related, but it's also very practical. And so we took a few pictures of the students doing that, and that was pretty exciting. Many of you participated in judging the door decorating contest again this year, thank you very much for coming. That was super fun. This is, we just finished our third year, and there is a lot of bragging rights. Those prizes are still up above the doorways, and it has become quite a thing. So if you weren't able to join us this past year, know that you'll get an invitation for this upcoming year. And this year's, the designs of the doors just keep getting better and better and better. So come enjoy that if you would like. Our empathy assembly was on the 26th, and again, those were capitalizing on our J-Hawk way values. And these are just pictures of the kids, and if you look on the picture on your right, you see Mrs. Roberson participating, and she is a force to be reckoned with in so many ways, not just door decorating, but on the balloon stomp as well. She came ready with the right shoes, and, well, we were all a little scared, that's not why. On March 4th, we were able to take two students to the Optimist Luncheon. And I don't know if you all know that every year the Optimist Clubs within the Des Moines area ask schools to sponsor two students, and usually we choose eighth graders. And Mr. Regan met with the eighth-grade team and got names, so we recognized Mackenzie Gilmore and Lucy Weinbriner-Jones. And those gals got to go with Ms. Rain, the eighth-grade counselor, and Mr. Regan to a luncheon, recognizing students who are giving of themselves, giving of their time, willing to help out others, and just good people. And so that's what they got to do, and they got to get the gal on the right, in the yellow, I believe is the president of Iowa, University of Iowa. And then they got to be in a picture with some fellow students from all around the metro. And that was a pretty fun thing they got to do. I'm gonna ask Mrs. Birdwell, Katie, of our sixth-grade social studies team, to kind of give us an idea about what Cultural is. Some of you might have heard of it, there's a lot more history in Urbandale than I was aware of until Katie schooled me, so...
You wanna go in first?
I, yeah, you tell me.
Okay. All right, so you guys can read that mission. Cultural is just a really wonderful organization that works really hard to connect students to ambassadors from all different cultures, to teach them about different cultures, to help them be more understanding and accepting of cultures. And we've been really lucky, like Cheryl said, we've had real history with Cultural. Cultural started, this is their, actually their 20th anniversary. It started in 2005, and I was lucky enough to meet the founder and now executive director, Sherry Gupta, at an Iowa Social Studies conference that year. Very lucky, because we became friends, and I then started piloting ambassadors in my classroom. So I would have, I wouldn't know the exact numbers, it's 20 years ago, but 10 to 15 ambassadors per year would come in and present with my classes, with my students, and then my only job was to give feedback. And we did this probably two or three years, and it was fantastic. So many different cultures, so many different presentations. But then as it kind of got off the ground, it required more funding, and so it kind of dropped off for a few years. But then we have been lucky in the last couple of years to get a grant so that all students can experience it. Last year, and we put it in sixth-grade social studies, A because it fits in our curriculum, and B, social studies is a class that every student takes, so no one was left out of the presentations. So last year, we had presentations, in January, it was during our North American Unit, we had some Native American presenters. This year, we had two presenters. We were in our Latin American Unit, we had, and I have handouts if anybody wants to see them. But Juan Marado with Capyara, which is a Brazilian martial arts, that was the one I got to experience with my classes. And then RJ Hernandez did Mexican music and instruments. Both excellent presenters, like I said, I only got to see one in person, I got to see pictures and videos of the other one, but involved the students, got them moving and talking, and it was just a really good experience. I think we have a video of, and some pictures from their presentation. This is a video that Cultural did as part of their 20th anniversary.
Featuring our school.
Yes.
Guitar that the mariachis use is called, repeat after me, is called a ribuela. It was great working with the kids, they had a lot of energy. It's great to see them, be curious about the things that we're sharing with them, and just open to new information and new experiences, and it's great to work with the kids.
Why is that not wanting to go away? Anyone?
Is the whole page a link?
Say it again?
Is the whole page a link to that? Can you move it with that?
Yeah, I was just gonna try to get rid of that.
Right, but they're gonna need to get back to the PowerPoint anyway.
Oh, true.
Maybe click Chrome on the bottom.
I know, I was like, someone under 40 come at me. That's you, Julie.
Not under 40.
Sean says quit.
No, I mean, maybe they got Chrome.
I tried.
I don't, I don't have much help.
Yep, we were kind of wrapping up, anyway, that was one of the last things. We have a grant, and that was something that, it was a... Brandon said you have money, I said, great. He said, it's money that typically goes to K6, and for the past two years, they extended it to K8. And so we have, I think it's 12, $1,500, $1,800, some small grant. And when we go and I say, Katie, we'd like to do this, there's kind of a, if you go to Cultural website, it's almost like a menu, and if you want to know about cooking from this country, or dance from this country, or fashion from that country, you just kind of pick and choose, and then they pull it all together, and then we can just make it work with whatever. So it's been really great. So those are some highlights, I think that was our last highlight of what we were working with so far. We are going back to Finance Park in May, like I mentioned, and we do have an assembly tomorrow, if anyone's free, between 1:15 and 3:00, come watch our third-quarter assembly. And then we've got another one that will be on the last couple of days of school. We did have our variety show the day before spring break, so that is kind of hot off the press, which is why pictures are not in here. Chris, I think, did you go to the variety show? Yep, I think every year ago, it just gets better and better, and this year was no exception, it was fantastic. So we all had a really good time. But you're welcome to come to the middle school anytime, any day, just show up or make an appointment, either one. Love to have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one more thing, sorry, I'm gonna pass this out. I know that we're supposed to do all the fun things that kids do, but I have this thing about academics that is important for, I want you guys to just peek at this. What this is, is just, I had our teachers comment on their proudest experience with their PLCs this year, and each teacher has contributed in some way. And I just wanted you guys, in your spare time, to do a little light reading. You can just see what our teachers have said in terms of how their PLCs are working, the hard work that they've done, what they're proud of, and the emphasis on PLCs that we're focusing on for this year and next is significant, and it's the right work at the right time. So I just wanted to...
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Thank you.
Okay, this, this week's "The More You Know", a couple of items, I just wanted to remind students and families that the third quarter ends Wednesday, the 26th. We have one more quarter, we've gotten three quarters out of the way, this year's gone really fast. We don't have any weather days to make up, so we still plan to have the last day of school as posted on May 29th. And as long as everything is done and you're ready for graduation, seniors' last day is still May 21st. I'm sure that's being counted down already somewhere. We want to remind families of incoming kindergarteners that registration continues, open enrollment is still an option for kindergarteners up until September 1st, incoming kindergarteners. As far as returning families' registration, that's ongoing. As of today, we have 689 completely registered returning students. We have 117 students that started registration but haven't completed it, and we have 27 new students with completed registration. So we want to remind families to get out there and get that registration done. You do not have to come out to the district office, you can go to your child's school. You could also come here if you wanted to, but the schools are probably more convenient, and there are dedicated computers in the offices so that parents can use those computers to do their registration. The ISAS window, this is the Iowa Test of Academic Progress, that's not what the acronym, I'm getting some words mixed up, but this is the state test that our kids take every year if they're in grades three through 11. And the window is April 14 to 25. This is for students in grades three through 11, and grades five, eight, and 10 are also assessed in the science portion. So that's coming up. On the week of April 7th, if you have a current fourth through 11th grader, parents will receive a notification that week with last year's ISAS scores in it so that you can take a look at having conversations with your children about how important the test is. I know kids don't like to take the test, because it's kind of a long test, but it's important that they do their best, because we do use that assessment as part of our decision-making as far as what courses or extra assistance that kids need. So we want to make sure it's as accurate as possible. But again, that window is gonna be April 14th to 25th, and since next Tuesday's April 2nd, that's gonna be coming up pretty quick, so just wanted to remind everybody of those dates.
Thank you. Sleep report.
All righty, well, as it is the first day back from spring break, not a ton going on at my school. I know everyone's just getting back in the school schedule, just coming off of a break, but... break, but I know myself and many others are feeling refreshed from having a break and ready to get back at it. Um, we don't have a ton today, but one thing I wanted to point out is that, um, our Student Senate executive members will be doing a visit to Southeast Polk, as well as some of the Dowling, uh, Student Council members will also be there, um, just doing a little school exchange. I know these have been mentioned before by Sean, um, that we have done this before, but this will be our last one at Southeast Polk. Um, I know many of us are excited, it's a great opportunity to just see how other schools are doing things and as well as getting new, new and fresh ideas about just building community within our school and within the district. So that is on Friday and we're looking forward to that.
Only other thing is AP tests are coming up, so we're getting some review sessions for those. Um, classes are coming to close, we're getting our work done. Um, that's pretty much it.
Yeah.
Great, thanks guys.
Hello, Stephanie Davis, Director of Student Services.
I'm Katie, or the Secondary EL Lead.
And we are here tonight to share with you, um, excuse me, how our progress has gone this year with our Secondary EL Lead. Um, the Secondary EL Lead position fits within our culture of dignity and belonging here in Urbandale, especially in the school-wide systems and structures, teaching and learning, and particularly in caregiver and community partnerships. Um, a year ago, my predecessor came before you to request this position. And the purpose of this position was, um, th- there was really a need for additional professional learning, coaching, collaboration with classroom teachers. And so identifying that need and, um, seeking to meet that need through an additional, um, teaching position. Um, professional learning for building and district leaders about best practices for multilingual learners, and additionally to offer programmatic support.
Um, so some of the responsibilities that I've gotten into this year, uh, I often get asked what the, the day-to-day looks like, and the truth is, there's no set day-to-day. It's like, it's a very seasonal position in terms of what's happening in that time and, uh, aligning what the needs of the, each of the buildings. Um, so speaking to professional learning and collaboration, doing a lot of PLCs with our EL teachers, working with them, making sure they have the things that they need, building agendas, making sure we have an organized place to keep all of our items, doing some job embedded, um, professional learnings, whether that's in other PLCs or working with individual teachers, whole group PL, or whole group professional development. Um, it created a hub where both, we have a, a front-facing for our EL teachers and then a facing one for all of our gen ed teachers at each of the buildings that they can access and pull resources from, know where they can get interpreter information, some other differentiation ideas live on there as well. And then collaborating with, like, administration, uh, other teachers as well as coaches, we've done a lot of work together to make sure that we're planning, we're problem-solving, and just meeting with our students there. Um, in terms of our student support and scheduling, I, there's, again, it's a seasonal thing, but at the beginning of the year, going through our student schedules, making sure that they have the support services that they need, um, going through and making sure that, uh, there's input provided to what we're going to be providing for students. Um, talking through ideas with teachers, bouncing off, okay, what do you think is working here, what's not working here, what else can we provide? Are there other teachers who need additional support that one of us or both of us can somehow provide to them? Um, tracking student info and how to use it, so you know that I've got this new student, what can we do to help them, how can I be more assets-based, what can I think about that they know to use to learn and leverage? Um, and then helping EL teachers, especially our new ones, understand the student needs and what they can do in the classroom, just helping them along the way of what, what does Urbandale, working with EL students look like and how can we better achieve, um, goals there? Moving into the assessment and data management, um, that's been a heavy lift in the season of ALPA testing, which has occurred all, all of February and all of March and closes Friday. Um, so when students come in to our district, I give them all the ALPA screeners and I'll get a little bit more detail on the next slide, but making sure that they're accurately provided and that we have the results and getting them into the correct classes based on that. Organizing of, um, the ALPA twenty-one assessment, both at the middle school, the high school, Metro West, and then also taking care of all of our ALPA students, which would be all of our dynamic level three special education learners. Um, and so with ALPA especially, that's a whole different assessment that they take, you take it two-on-one, so me, their special education teacher, the student, um, for four different tests for each of those students. So that can be quite a heavy lift for our teachers when they have done that in the past. Um, and then also with data management of that, I take care of our power school work with our EL students, so when they come in, I make sure that they have the code coding or the things right in there that say what kinds of services they're getting, their interpreter needs, making sure they have the right attachments that say what kinds of supports they will get in the classroom. Um, as well as the tide roster, which tells us in the system for their ALPA twenty-one testing, who they are, what roster they're on, um, and just houses their information there. Uh, in terms of curriculum and resource organization, we have been using Nat Geo, which has been a great resource for us curriculum-wise, but we've been doing more learning with that. So I took a lot of time at the beginning of the year to get to know it a lot myself so I could build in supports for our teachers, so they have a, one place to go in our shared Google Drive that they can get into, get exactly what they need. All the PDFs are created by lesson-by-lesson basis so that they can pull from that and make it really easy for them. They've had a really great phonics success this year using that and it's at grade level too, so it's not like our high school, middle school learners are looking at, um, elementary things when they're newcomers, it's for them at their age level, but it is still what they are needing. And then the administrative and on-the, or on-the-spot support, the, or the beauty of this position is that you have more flexibility. So I have more time to say, "Oh, I have, see this need here, I can go and address that, or I can be in that meeting and be a voice for our EL teachers when they are teaching students." We looked a lot more at our students who have limited and interrupted formal education, what can we do for them? Looked more about our disability suspect, how can we improve that process to make it make sense, make sure that we're not over-serving or underserving our EL students? As well as making sure our interventions are accurate and helpful and planning or looking at the progress of EL students. Because they are, it is a nuanced, um, group of students, so we want to make sure that we're not just looking at this and making sure that we have all of the factors included that we need to have. Also working with interpreters, I, at the beginning of the year, look at all the clusters of students in, um, their classes and if they're not getting support, our interpreter's checking in, where can they go to best support students in the classroom? And then also creating schedules for them based on that, but then during conferences, making sure that interpreters have a place to be, they know where their schedule is, teachers know where they can put on a sheet where interpreters can go, and then just making sure that all goes nice and smoothly. Try the block. Um, okay, we're gonna have to screen them. When a student comes into our district, um, what has happened in the past is that teachers would get a notification that says, "Okay, this student might be an EL student, so we need to screen them." So the teacher's first goal is to locate the student's records. Do they have previous EL, um, services from another school? Do they have IO records? Do they have a home language survey already? And then if they don't and we need to screen them, they coordinate with the families and the student to have them come in and take a screener. In the past, we haven't had a lot of time to step out of classes, step out of planning to go and meet with those students, of course they do the screener. But it might be they come in, we screen them real quick, send them out, say, "We'll call you," and then they go on their way and we, you know, um, figure out classes are best for them. So they would do the screener, um, and that takes about thirty to sixteen minutes depending on the student. And then they'd analyze the results, communicate those with the counselor to say, "Okay, these are the classes that I would suggest based on what their language needs are." Complete all the paperwork, mail it home, put it where it needs to go electronically. And that process is pretty intense, it takes a long time to do a lot of those things. What we've been able to do this year is I've been able to pick up that piece for the middle school and the high school, and we've added some things that I think have been really valuable. So when families come in, I get an interpreter so that I can sit down with parents or guardian, we can learn about what their educational history looks like, we talk about what school will look like for them at the middle school or high school, they get a little brochure in their home language that tells them who the teachers are they'll work with, it tells them all the basics of attendance, all the things that they need to go home with to be ready for school. Um, and with that, we go for all of the tour of the school, where they get to see all the classrooms, see what it'll look like, get an idea what it's going to be like to be there. And I think that's added a really nice element of, okay, you're welcome here, you know what's gonna be coming a little bit more. Um, you can see the numbers up there, it shows you how many screeners we did last year, how many we did this year, so secondary total, forty-five last year, and that was all on the roster teachers. So middle school does that based on grade level, so sixth grade teacher would be all of sixth grade, um, seventh, eighth grade same, and then high school does it based on, uh, chunks of the alphabet. So it wasn't always even, but it, it, it did take a lot of time to remove them from a classroom unfortunately often.
So, excuse me, I'm sort of beginning to look at some of the student data. Um, this is an initial look at some of our A-reading data for this year. This is not definitive, this is a, hmm, isn't this interesting? Um, at this point, this is something that we'd want to continue to look at and look at our trends over time. It is not uncommon for there to be a dip in overall proficiency across the district in the winter, in the winter screening of A-reading. Um, we also remember that when we're looking at our students who are identified as EL in this particular example, these are not students who have exited EL, um, these are students who are currently identified within the English learner program because they have not yet reached a level of proficiency in English. So the, the scores that we're seeing, um, align with our knowledge of language acquisition and, uh, we know that students are making progress towards that. What was interesting this year, um, is that while it is common to have a dip in proficiency overall at the winter for all of our students, our English learners a- actually improved their percent proficient this winter. So this will be something that we'll want to keep an eye on, see how this turns out at the end of the year and continue as we go through the years. But I found this to be just an interesting piece of information as we're looking at the change in support this year. Um, one other factor is we're thinking about the English learners who are, um, testing in this example. Um, from last year to this year, we have had a ten percent change overall in our number of English learners at the secondary level. And our students who are at the emerging level, we've had a thirty-nine percent increase at the secondary level. So the English, um, English proficiency determination is, um, what a student is given at the end of the ALPA testing and whether the screener or the, um, ALPA twenty-one test. So a student could be at the emerging level, progressing level, or proficient. And we have seen a, a marked increase in our number of students at the emerging level and still are seeing that level of success. Some of what we have seen, um, has been so positive. I reached out to our teachers, some instructional coaches, administrators, to get feedback on how the Secondary EL Lead is going. And I got a wonderful piece of advice that I should put some of the quotations up on the screen for you all to read, without realizing that every single piece of feedback I received was at least two paragraphs long. People were just absolutely glowing, um, about how things have changed this year, the impact that the Secondary EL Lead position has had on their day-to-day, um, whether it is our EL teachers, instructional coaches, or administrators. Um, the Secondary EL Lead has taken, um, over some of the time-consuming administration tasks, whether screening, ALPA testing schedules, data management, allowing EL teachers to focus more on instruction. Um, we've seen enhanced teacher support and collaboration the EL Lead has provided. Um, professional, um, professional learning, problem-solving support, both for new and experienced teachers, um, and improving their confidence as well as their effectiveness. We have seen improved student placement and success by managing the screening and ensuring accurate class placement. The EL Lead has contributed to better student outcomes and smoother transitions for our EL students. We've seen stronger school-wide EL support, um, through PLC leadership, school-wide professional learning sessions and advocacy. Um, our EL Lead has helped ensure that the EL students, uh, receive appropriate support and differentiation within their classrooms. And finally, we've seen a positive impact on our families. Um, she works very closely with the families, interpreters, school staff. Um, our EL Lead has fostered a more organized and goal-oriented EL department, improving data tracking, phonics instruction, and overall student language acquisition efforts. Um, so looking ahead.
Yeah, looking ahead, um, you know, within a year of working in this position, you, you learn things as you go, like, okay, what can we do better as we keep learning more? Um, part of that would be working on the PLCs, so intentionally choosing PLCs where you know there's a lot of ELs that are placed in those groups and making sure that I'm, I can be there maybe like quarterly, like, be with this group and we can work through things together, I can learn from you, you can learn from me, what can we do to better serve our ELs? Um, using the feedback from this year to improve on the processes, especially with formative assessment. Um, the unfortunate thing about ALPA twenty-one, it's at the end of the year, so you kind of get your, we're gonna get our scores in May, and then it's like, okay, we've got that. So we have formative assessments that we'd like to start using more, um, frequently to make sure we're checking how students, being reading, writing, and listening, which is what they're tested on, is more frequently, um, looked into and then we can use that to guide our instruction. And then just keeping on with the job embedded professional learning for teachers about EL student identity, so, you know, more opportunities for all staff, whether it's more like book studies or talking through differentiation, looking at scores, teaching them how to use all the information that we have to make good, uh, guidelines, instructional practices based on what students already have provided to them. And then adding in some kinds of language objectives to lessons so that they're thinking about, okay, what kind of language does student need to be able to be, um, showing proficiency in the content as well as the academic language.
With that, what questions might you have? A quick one. Um, last year we had quite a bit of discussion of the difference between the needs at the high school and the elementary. Has the positive success of what you seem to figure out at the high school level, has that conversation been had at the elementary level to see, um, you know, whether that would be the right move or change to maybe make it an elementary level or is that?
So actually later this evening, I will be coming, um, to request, um, an elementary EL Lead position. So this is a conversation that we have been having. We have seen, um, as you said, we have seen such immense, um, overwhelming, positive growth at the secondary level. We know that additional support is needed at the elementary, and this position will look different at the elementary dealing with four different buildings as opposed to two. Um, and, and so some of the differences are in there, but, uh, we know that our English learners are gen ed students first, and so we need to make sure that we're providing our classroom teachers with the skills and structures to be able to help with that language acquisition. Um, and, and elementary EL Lead would be able to help with those conversations, whether by being in with the PLCs, by having conversations with the administrators, providing that additional learning, um, along the way. It will look different, there's some structures that are particular to the high school and middle school, especially when we're thinking about, um, credits that students are earning for graduation. But the, the need for additional support and additional professional learning and guidance and that programmatic support exists both at the elementary and the secondary.
I think the piece that I'm most happy about is when Katie described all the things that need to happen when you have a new student. Without her, the teachers are being pulled away, so the services are not being provided for whatever that timeframe is. Having her be able to do what she's doing means that the teacher can provide those services, which I think should lead to higher achievement. So I, I feel like that's a big piece that we need to remember, it'd be like a, a special ed teacher being pulled away and not being able to provide SDI to the kids because there's some paperwork thing that has to happen. It's legal stuff, it has to happen, but this allows the freedom to make sure the services are continually provided without interruption. So that's the piece that I find highly beneficial.
So maybe I should rephrase that. The positive feedback that you've gotten from the high school teachers, are we sharing that with the elementary teachers so they will receive that in the same way?
We have the oppor- we have the opportunity to chat today because we, we shared that this is something that would be coming about two weeks ago.
Okay.
Um, and so I gave them the opportunity to ask questions along the way, but we had an in-person conversation today because they've had about two, you know, two weeks to, to process and know this is coming. Some of the questions were, um, most strongly about the differences between elementary and secondary. And we recognize that there, there are different needs at both, but some are very much the same. And being, we have such skilled teachers, um, And being, we have such skilled teachers, um K-12. And being able to provide the teachers with that immense experience at working with our English learners, additional support that will free up their expertise um to working with students with language acquisition, that to me is such a benefit.
Thank you.
We don't have public comment, okay?
So we have no public comments tonight, and we'll move on to the consent agenda.
We'd move to bring the consent agenda forward.
I'm a little second.
Are there questions, comments, discussion?
I have one, and I apologize, I didn't submit this. My weekend was a little crazy. Um, on the continuing contracts, do we have any idea um the counseling service? Do we know usage? I know in the past, we've kind of gotten that presented to us of how often it's it's used.
I don't know that we could do it off the top of our head, so.
Okay, I apologize, yeah.
And remember, we don't want to use it.
Right.
We would hope that we don't need it, but I understand the question.
Okay. And is there, um, have we looked at overlap with our regular insurance of like what's covered? Like, because don't, I mean, don't most insurance coverages anymore have like counseling sessions as part of our regular insurance? I know this offers other things as well. I'm just wondering if.
More than likely, yeah, it should have some.
I haven't thought that out, so do you know off the top of your head?
Okay.
I think, I think there is some some coverage. I I can't speak to whether it's a hundred percent though, all.
Yeah, I wouldn't know what those are, but we could look into it.
Okay. I would just be curious how much our regular insurance is is covering and if um, how much overlap there is between what's already being covered through the health insurance and what's covered here. I'd be curious to know that.
Kent?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Manki?
Yes.
Ben Rice Wyke?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. And on to our new action items. First is the approval of our tax notice. Any questions? Can we have a motion then?
We approve the tax notice for twenty twenty-five.
Mead will second. This will be a roll call again. Mead?
Yes.
Manki?
Yes.
Ben Rice Wyke?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. And approve the vendor for the UMS band room renovations.
You could see attached to that as Eric is coming up, there was um a number of bids. And I'm sure that Eric can answer any questions that you have.
Absolutely. Evening. Let's see everybody. Um, yeah, so uh two action items before you tonight. Uh, the first one is for the um middle school band room renovations. So as explained uh at the last meeting, um you've got some uh existing uh sound rooms there that will be removed and we'll be putting in um uh permanent rooms there for the for the use of the band students. Uh, we did have really good uh bidding um uh there. We had, I think, eight um different bidders uh participating, which is good to see in such a what I'll call small uh project. Normally, you see this uh when you have million-dollar contracts and things of that nature. But um that goes to show you kind of what's happening in the market right now. Um, so uh good news there, it was under the estimated uh um budget value. Um, and you have worked with Edge Commercial previously uh for the Metro West uh community um uh Metro West Academy um renovation about two years ago. So um, so I would, I don't see any issue in recommending that.
Just a quick one, uh contingencies, i- is there, if we don't use them, it'll be less that, correct? Okay.
Yep.
Manki would move to approve um awarding the construction contract for the middle school band rooms to Edge Commercial of Grimes.
Yeah, a little second.
Manki?
Yes.
Ben Rice Wyke?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Thank you. And on to the HVAC at High School and Webster.
Um, so uh similar story here. Um, so in this case, we had uh two uh two components, one for uh HVC controls for the um Webster uh property, and then one for the high school property. Um, and you'll see there, um, we only had one, the one uh vendor here because that is the the district standard for controls. So not that we're um doing anything different per se than what we did at the middle school. Um, this is your your uh your district control vendor. Um, and so changing over the entire system at the elementary to uh to this uh uh vendor and then making upgrades um at the high school. Um, so you'll see on that budget summary there that um we were under budget on the um on the elementary side, but we were higher on the um on the high school side. Um, again, just as we were getting into it, uh just some additional things, scope there that we found. The other component is that we aren't asking them to do the high school over three years rather than all in one year. So they are building in some inflationary kind of uh um components to that. Um, the other thing to note is um the three alternates for the for the elementary school. So um in working with Zach um and company, um looking at some of the the uh upgrades that we have not been doing at Webster, that we have been doing at the at the high school over time, um relates to some valves, some water valves. And so as they're um as they're working on that system, um these are additional pricings there uh that um are not, they're not required today. However, as we know, anytime we do something in the future, it's tend, it'll tend to cost more. Um, so we did break those out just to show you that those are not included as part of our original estimate. Um, and uh and but they are things that we would recommend doing um for the perimeter maintenance of the system in the long run. So that would bring your total there to the one point eight million and change.
So Eric, I guess I'm I'm thinking back to our days of getting Valerius built. And there were some things that we weren't, we held off on just because because of the staging with with post-COVID, pricing, all of that. I guess in this environment, are you confident that a three-year effort at the high school isn't going to, with the environment that we're in, right? If we get tariffs on parts and components and all of that, that we're not, are we gonna, are you gonna be back here in eighteen months saying, hey, we need another hundred thousand dollars because this is more expensive than we thought it was going to be?
Oh, good question. Um, and one of the reasons why you, why we uh structure it the way we did is that um this is a, what I'll call a guaranteed lump sum bid. Um, and so by uh similar similar to the um uh to the middle school, we're asking the vendor to 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 put in a price that locks in this this amount for the duration of the project. So um unless there's something absolutely crazy, and that would be um, there are terms, you know, like acts of war and things like that.
Sure.
Um, but um they should be purchasing all these, all the materials upfront and then holding on to that so that it's just a labor component they have to install at the later date.
Okay.
Um, so and we'll go over that when we have a pre-construction meeting with them, uh which we'll hold in the next uh, I think, six weeks um uh to go over, you know, what that what that looks like, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So then is the advantage to taking three years to do it, just spreading out the costs?
Correct. From your, so from your uh capital improvements uh costing, I would work with Steve on. Um, the district allocates so many dollars per year in your fiscal year based on either that whole or say a few thousand dollars. And so um the benefit of of doing this is you don't take a one-point-three-million-dollar hit to your current or your next year fiscal budget. Um, and so uh, if I'm speaking out of.
Yeah, we would, we would have to probably cancel some other projects.
Okay.
Uh, by doing it this way, the company is holding those items, you know, same cost for that three-year project. It just makes sense.
Okay.
On our end. Or we can continue with what we already have on the plan.
Okay, thank you.
And and really no, no different then, uh even for like the Valerius and Olmstead example, even though that was a um a thirty-three-million-dollar project that was actually spread out um by pay applications over multiple years um of your of your financial plan. And so those are things that Piper Sandler and company take into account while they're doing your your financial projections.
Who else?
I would move to approve the vendor for the HVAC at at the high school at Webster.
Manki will second.
And we'll roll call again. Ben Rice Wyke?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Manki?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Fantastic.
Thank you, sir. Good to see everybody.
Thank you. Thanks, Eric. Okay, and the additional FTE requests for the elementary EL staffing twenty-five, twenty-six?
Well, hello, it's been so long. Um, so this fall, I promised um when I brought the BLA plan to you um that I would learn more about our needs and about our students um before making any decisions on any sort of staffing plan. Um, I have been able to review our our data with our students. As I mentioned earlier, we've had quite an increase in the number of English learners. Additionally, at the elementary, we've had a fifty-eight percent increase in the number of students at the emerging level. Um, so the data indicate a need for additional staffing. We currently have one-point-five teachers, EL teachers at Karen Akers, two-point-five at Olmstead, two at Valerius, and one at Webster. So the addition of one FTE for the EL teacher would add um point-five position at both Olmstead and Valerius. So that would bring Olmstead to three full-time teachers. Um, Valerius would have two-point-five teachers. So where we're seeing the greatest need with our students and the growth um across the district. Um, additionally, I'm asking um for one-point-oh EL elementary lead. Um, we just had a a nice time talking about the secondary EL lead. This would look very similar, but we understand, of course, that the elementary has some different needs um just based on the population of our students and the makeup of our buildings.
So it would just, this this full-time position would just be at Olmstead and Valerius divided or?
Well, um, it will have to take a look at where people want to shift, um if there is some shifting. Um, I have some ideas that I'm looking at as far as um whether people want to, because we currently have a point-five split between Karen Akers and Olmstead. Would that be a position that shifts full-time? We additionally support St. Pious. Um, so we have, that position is currently shared half-time with one of our high school positions. Um, our St. Pious students are actually enrolled in Valerius. So we have, we are still looking at all the different options as to whether of where the two, where the half-time pieces will come together.
Okay. But by student need, that the need is there, is that what you're saying?
Student need, we we have a need for three full-time teachers at Olmstead and two and a half at Valerius. So that that's where we're asking. It's it's confusing because it's going half and yes.
When we last um talked about the EL lead positions, we had a lot of questions about how the secondary's week looked. Can you talk about with four different buildings, how that might look? And I know it'll probably depend a lot on who and where and all of that.
Oh, and I'm at a little bit of a disadvantage because going into this next school year, we have a new schedule at all of our elementary schools, which is actually really exciting because that provides um additional win time, additional intervention time for our EL teachers to work with students. Um, but at this time, we don't quite have the idea of um which days each building will be working with our PLCs. However, um we know that um what we would like to do is um schedule the EL lead based on when different grade levels are meeting, if at all possible, so that they can continue to work um in some of those discussions. Um, I imagine it will be at least one day a week in each building. Um, one of the things that we do with the secondary EL lead is we actually have a Monday, Wednesday, Thursday schedule. And then the uh the next week gets opposite based on the high school schedule. And so we'll, we'll need to take a look with this new elementary schedule and and make sure that we're aligning most closely with the days um that we have those PLCs already there and or um when different teams are meeting. So we'll take a look at that. Um, additionally, they'll be able to work very closely with the administrative staff and some of the planning as well as the coaches. Um, and so knowing, knowing that we have a lot of different moving pieces, I can't answer exactly, but um the plan would be to take a look at at the way the schedule is is coming together and place them where it will be in greatest need.
Manki would move to approve the addition of one FTE for the elementary EL teacher and an additional uh one-point-zero FTE for the elementary EL lead for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Young will second. And our last roll call.
Williams?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Manki?
Yes.
Ben Rice Wyke?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Yeah. Entertain a motion.
Manki will make that motion to adjourn.
Got a motion, you have a second.
Mead will second.
All those who gave our eye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, meeting adjourned.